Steve Levin, incumbent, and Victoria Cambrañas, his challenger, and Mitchell Cohen, who WBI is also co-sponsoring this, and he's going to be the moderator.
Welcome. Before we start, we need a timekeeper. I think Victoria Curdo volunteered to be the timekeeper, but she might need to borrow somebody's watch.
No, second person.
People can help her out if she doesn't have it, if you need it.
My phone is off real bad, so when this runs out, somebody else has to take over.
All right, we're gonna pass along. Does anybody else want to be the assistant timekeeper to take over when her phone runs out? The Jews. Okay, what's your name?
Kier.
Kier.
Yes.
K-E-E-R?
Kier.
Kier. Okay, Kier, Victoria, could work together? Thank you. So my name is Mitchell Cohen. I'm former chair of the WBI local board a bunch of years ago, and I'll be moderating tonight's debate between the candidates for city council in the 33rd Council District, which includes parts of Greenpoint, Borum Hill, Bed-Stuy, Linnega Hills, Brooklyn Heights, Williamsburg, downtown Brooklyn, and go on us. Candidates are Steve Levin. Where's Steve? Here's Stephen Levin, who is the incumbent, who is running for reelection on the Democratic Party ticket, and Victoria Cambrañas, who is running as an independent candidate with the Progress for All Party. We also have a panel of expert questioners, and these include Howard Collins, who is the president of the Borum Hill Association. We have John Talton, who is an editor of The Independent, which is upstairs in this building. We have Catherine Davis, who works at, for many years, has hosted shows on WBI radio, and Catherine Swan, who is the editor of the Washington Square Park Blog. And they will be asking questions after, a little bit later, as we, after they make, the candidates make their opening statements. I'd especially like to express my appreciation and thanks to Melissa Ennin and the Commons, whose passion for freedom of speech and for providing needed services to this community have been incredibly important for progressive social justice and environmental movements. She left us the opportunity to provide us all with this value free of charge, which is amazing in New York. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you so much. And WBI, the Commons are streaming this live over the internet. WBI will be recording some of this, and hopefully will be playing it over the air in the next few days. For too many years, the candidate debates have been more of a spectacle in this country, like entertainment and not information. These are extremely serious times we're in. So in the name of my old friend Bob Fitch, who wrote the book The Assassination of New York, and who died a few years ago, and who was one of the major forces behind the community participatory budgeting process and others, and critiques and support of the unions, I christen this debate in the name of Bob Fitch. We are confronted at every turn by idiots in politics, demagogues, and profiteers, and dare I say fascists. And that's what, one of the things we're up against in this country. I'm hoping that we can break that mold by involving community residents and media to take part in real discussion of our concerns, what we call grassroots participatory democracy, which is why at the later parts, in the second half, we will open it up to the people who are here today, the voters, to ask questions also of the candidates, and not just leave it up to the experts who are here, so-called experts in our own way. We want answers, straight answers, from those seeking to represent us, but we also want them to challenge the old and corrupt profiteering for private gain that is age-old in New York City, ever since Boss Tweed, a long before. So as John Lennon said, "I'm sick to death of hearing things," by Lily Libard. Oh, I'll cut out part of what he said. "I'm sick to death of hearing things from narrow-minded politicians. All I want is the truth. Just give me the truth." While I don't expect any one individual to be the harbor of any truth, of all the truth, rather, to hold that totality what is true, we should at least expect and require honesty from those candidates seeking to represent us. And sometimes they need to say, "I don't know," or "Let's figure this out together," rather than having all the answers. It's sort of the honesty, part of the honesty I'm looking for, which is why I'm breaking with the spectacle of debates on TV, which in my view only seek not to inform us, but to entertain us, to immobilize us, and actually destroy our social and environmental movements. We invite the second half, full participation from everybody here. So let's hear from the candidates right now. They'll have six minutes each to introduce themselves, and then two minutes each to respond to what the other one said, and then we'll take it from there. So if the timekeepers could time and let them know when, I guess five minutes is up and they have a minute left, and that would be good. Is that okay with you guys?
Five minutes?
Six minutes. But let them know when five minutes is up, so they could wrap up. Okay, so first we'll hear from Steve Levin, who's the current, the incumbent, city council member from this district. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mitchell. And thank you to Melissa, and to the Commons, and WBI for hosting tonight. And I want to thank all of you for coming out. This is a remarkable turnout for this debate, being that it was, you know, it was not a, you know, a long scheduled debate, and so the turnout is really extraordinary, I think, on a Sunday night, and it's raining, and, you know, you all have busy lives and want to be able to spend time with your families and enjoy yourselves on a Sunday night. So I greatly appreciate you all coming out here because you care about democracy. I want to thank Victoria for really spearheading this debate and for making sure that it happened. So thank you so much, and thank you for your candidacy. I think it's really important, you know, that no candidate just, you know, have, you know, no challenge when they're up for reelection. I did not have a challenge in the Democratic primary, and I'm really appreciative that you have, you know, are running as an independent candidate in the Progress for All Party, and I think that's great. I want to thank you, and I want to thank the Commons for hosting. So I am running for a third term this year because I think that there is still important work that I can do in the New York City Council. I have served two terms since the beginning of 2010, and, you know, I think that this is probably true for a lot of council members, that there is some lead-in time to become the most effective council members that they can be. And I would say that over the last few years, I have, I believe, been an even more effective council member than I was, frankly, in the first term. I think that in terms of legislation, I've passed 15 bills in this term and expect to pass about five more. And these are on important issues like reforming the foster care system, addressing environmental needs in our city, removing dangerous trucks from historically overburdened communities like Community Board One, which is in the 33rd District and shares the 34th Council District, ridding our city or preventing fracking waste from ever appearing in New York City, developing a cultural plan for New York City, which has now been rolled out, and it was the first cultural plan since 2001, which really establishes what New York City's blueprint is going to be for culture in the coming decades. I just recently passed legislation that provides some accountability to the 421A system so that we know that there's going to be a random audit of 20% of 421A buildings to see that they're complying with the affordability requirements, with the job service, building service workers prevailing wage requirements. Just passed a piece of legislation around creating a real-time enforcement unit within the Department of Buildings that would allow tenants who are being harassed by their landlords without a permit to actually get responded to by the Department of Buildings. You know, I, this is a very difficult time in New York City right now for a number of reasons. We are seeing gentrification throughout New York City. Neighborhoods that were being gentrified 10 or 20 years ago, those problems have only gotten worse, and neighborhoods that weren't being gentrified 10 or 20 years ago now are being gentrified. And there are a lot of major, major problems that go along with that. Primarily, the biggest problem around gentrification is forcing families out of their homes. It's strictly an economics issue and in a lot of ways a cultural issue. What it does to a neighborhood's culture to have families forced out because landlords are harassing them, because they're not in rent-stabilized units, and the units are being priced out of their range, all types of issues that we're seeing in accelerated fashion. And, you know, to that end, over the last three and a half years, I've been chair of the Council's General Welfare Committee. We have oversight over the Department of Homeless Services, Human Resources Administration, Department of Social Services, all the things that are there to try to protect families from being harassed, to make sure that benefits are accessible to families, I mean, basic things like SNAP benefits, public assistance benefits, Medicaid, those essential things, those absolute, the real safety net in our city, making sure that it's protected and expanded. I don't agree with the current administration on everything. I think that they've done, by and large, a very good job under extremely difficult circumstances. They were left with a city that really, truly prioritized the needs of the rich and the well-off, and they've done their best to reorient the city in a lot of areas. That has been very apparent in the areas that we've overseen in the General Welfare Committee, when it comes to legal services for those that need it, when it comes to homelessness vouchers, making sure that homeless, families that are living in homelessness are living in terrible conditions. Those are all things I think we need to continue to work on. I would be very honored if I was given the opportunity to serve for four more years. And I do believe that, I think in the next four years, I can accomplish the things that we've already started to work on and, I think, do, you know, as good a job as I possibly can. And just lastly, I just want to say that I, more than anything else, and this becomes more apparent every day, honestly, the purpose of this job is to help people. And that's what I think about every morning when I wake up, that's what I think about every night when I go to bed, is how are we using this office to help people in their daily lives and make people's lives just a little bit better here in New York City? So I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here, and I look forward to this great debate. Thanks.
Victoria Cambrañas.
I think that's a good height for me. Hello, everyone. How's everyone doing? I'm Victoria Cambrañas, and I'm here because I believe that running for city council is a huge responsibility. It's a great honor to be a public servant and to serve the community. So I'd like to thank all of you for being here tonight. I'd like to thank organizers, WBI, as well as all the community leaders who have contributed to organizing this event here tonight. I'd also like to thank all of you who have shown up in this terrible weather. I think it's amazing to see this kind of civic engagement, and I think it's important also to hold our leaders accountable for what they have done and what they plan to do for the future. I'd also like to thank Steve for being here tonight and finally accepting, coming onto this debate tonight. I think it's really important that we both are able to express our opinions on the issues, many of which align. We're both quite progressive, but I also believe that we have some things that are not in common, and so I think it's important that we discuss those things tonight. I'm a daughter of two wonderful immigrants. My parents are actually over there in the corner, Bronya and George. I'm a first-generation American, very, very proud of my heritage and my roots in Greenpoint, Brooklyn. I was born on Java Street, and I went to school on Dupont Street, which has now unfortunately been turned into a private development. And that is a trend that we are seeing, a very disheartening trend, that we are seeing across our district. It's happening in Greenpoint, and it's happened in Williamsburg, and it's continuing to happen. We're seeing that people are being displaced. We're seeing that people can't afford their rent. We're seeing a lot of noise and air pollution. It's become very loud, and it's definitely become very unaffordable to be here. So we're facing a crisis right now, especially when it comes to housing, especially when it comes to infrastructure, which is not keeping up with the actual trend of development. I believe that there is a rapid pace that is happening here that is not being balanced. We're getting the rough end from these negotiations, which I believe could be negotiated better on behalf of the community. And I believe there's more that can be done to negotiate better and to have balanced, responsible development. I'm not an enemy of development. I think we do need good development in this district. We are one of the most attractive areas in the entire United States right now for people to come and live and for people to develop. We want that, but we want it to be responsible, we want it to be balanced negotiations, and we want people in the community to benefit from all of these developments. So that is a trend that I see happening. I think there's a lot more that we can do, and I look forward to actually serving this community in a capacity in city council where I would be a champion for the people, and I would champion the community's concerns first and foremost, above all other concerns. I'm not beholden to anyone except the community that is here in District 33. I have no ties to the development industry, I have no ties and strings to Bill de Blasio's supposed plans for affordable housing, which I believe are misleading, and I have no ties to any moneyed interests that would like to come and corrupt our political system. And I believe those things are important, because at the end of the day, it's our community that we have to answer to. As a public servant, we are here to lift the community up, for them to stand upon our shoulders, and for them to believe that we are serving them and acting as a liaison with upper levels of government. So I would like to do that very much for this community. I'm of this community, I love this community. So that is my stance, and I hope that you will look forward to hearing more of our responses to this debate tonight. Thank you.
So I will now ask a question of both candidates, and then the candidates get a couple of minutes each to respond, and after that, we'll go to our panel of questioners to ask also questions, and then two minutes each to respond, and also to go back and forth for a minute if they want to debate on it.
So Mitch, I'm sorry, two minutes each or a couple minutes?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not professional at this. If you had a response, and you had a response to each other, you can engage right now.
Well, no, I just, I greatly appreciate the points that Victoria raised, and I think that, I think that you're spot on, that that's what, absolutely what a responsible city council member ought to be, is that the liaison between everybody who is out there doing their own thing, not involved in politics, that's not involved in government, but is going to at some point or another need the services of the government, whether it's the Department of Buildings, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Education, everybody at some point has some interrelation with the city of New York. And the city council member, I mean, long before 311, the city council members, and long before you could do anything online, the city council member, they had a phone number that you could always call to get your concerns addressed. And I've tried to do that over the last eight years, and, but I think you're absolutely right, that that's really what a council member ought to be, as well as an honest broker and somebody that is, at the end of the day, always looking out for the needs of the community and not for the needs of the very powerful and well-connected. So I agree.
Thank you for your support. I mean, I, should pull this down a little bit? Thank you for agreeing with me. I agree with you further on that point. I'm not sure how much more of a response I could give other than to say that, you know, when it comes to, comes to politics in general, and especially politics in New York City, we tend to see a lot of promises, we tend to see a lot of statements that can be quite lofty, and at the end of the day, what we actually have to look at is, as Bob Dylan said, the truth. We want the truth. We want to actually...
John Lennon.
Sorry. John Lennon. So what we actually want is the truth. We want the community to have transparency, we want us to have access to our political representatives, to actually be beholden to the community, for them to, for us, to be leaders for the community. And right now, I believe we are in a very big crisis when it comes to our national politics. I believe that we have a lot of concerns that are happening nationally, but I think those concerns also can be very good at distracting us from what happens locally. Because when, when you look at national politics, there's a lot going on, especially in DC right now, but what's happening locally is actually much more immediately important for everyone's everyday life. And so we don't want to have a system or have an environment in our politics where we are looking to DC and not focusing and putting a mirror and a microscope on what's happening right here in our backgrounds.
So according to New York Public Interest Research Group, Brooklyn, Kings County, is the most heavily pesticide-ed county in the entire state. That includes agricultural counties, that includes Long Island, that includes everywhere. Brooklyn is getting drenched, and by far, far away, the most amount. Meanwhile, Mayor de Blasio continues the reckless policies of former Mayor Giuliani and former Mayor Bloomberg, and he's approved the spraying of the entire city with carcinogenic and endocrine-disrupting pesticides to kill mosquitoes. The city council member, Ben Callis, has introduced the bill before the city council, Resolution 0800, to ban chemical pesticides like Monsanto's Roundup from all city parks. That's a small but important step forward, it seems to be, and last week, the bill, despite being so progressive, only had eight cosponsors as of last week. So will you, both of you, if you're re-elected or elected, endorse and sponsor that bill, actually, would you do it right now, and work with the No Spray Coalition and other anti-pesticide activists to toughen the existing Local Law 37 and introduce more and harder-hitting legislation to protect people, animals, and the environment from the scourge of cancer-causing pesticides in this borough?
I'll do it tomorrow. I will sign on to the Council's Resolution tomorrow. You know, we've taken a pretty aggressive stance on addressing environmental concerns in this district. I have sponsored legislation to ban fracking waste in New York City, so now, while fracking is banned in New York State, it's not banned in Pennsylvania, and as it is now, we follow the lead, actually, of small municipalities upstate. You can't drive, you know, as you all know, fracking produces a tremendous amount of byproduct that's very toxic, fracking wastewater, and you can't just, you know, put it in the landfill. So we made, we passed a law to say that I sponsored that you can't drive through New York City with fracking wastewater at all, no matter what jurisdiction you're coming from. But also, I sponsored legislation to remove PCBs from our city schools, and as a result, that was actually one of the first bills I sponsored back in 2011, I believe. As a result, today, there are hundreds of schools that have had dangerous PCBs, which also have the same issues that you're seeing with Roundup carcinogenic, endocrine disruptors. All of that has been removed from the lighting ballasts in New York City schools. In addition, you know, we have, in the 33rd District, we have more state superfund sites, ground fields, we have two federal superfund sites, as you all know, in Newtown Creek and McWhonans Canal. And we've really focused on working with the oversight agencies, we're at the city level, OER, and on the state level, which is the State Department of Environmental Conservation, on coordinating on these, sometimes not the big picture, you know, not the big-ticket ones like Newtown Creek or McWhonans Canal, but on the small ones like, for example, New Heart site on Dupont Street in Franklin, where there's been a school that's been cited, or recited a school.
Your turn.
Okay, oh, sorry. Okay.
Thank you. Victoria?
Sure. Well, I definitely agree with Councilman Levin. We should be sponsoring this kind of legislation. We should be offering real solutions to a huge crisis we're facing. I hate mosquitoes more than anyone. They seem to love me, but, you know, I don't think it's responsible for us to be putting poisons in the air, in our grounds, in our schools, on our walls. You know, this city is a huge polluted city. It's difficult enough as it is to breathe our air. Our district has the BQE running through it, so we have high asthma rates, high emphysema rates, we have contaminations in Newton Creek and McWhonans, and there's still, you know, reports up in the air about vapors from benzene affecting children in the district and in the area. So these are all concerns that we need to be scrutinizing a lot more. I don't think that the reports do a good job of clarifying and being transparent about what's actually in our ground, what's actually, sorry, what's actually happening on the ground, and what's actually being done to prevent this stuff from going forward. So not only do we have to fight what's already been instituted by previous administrations, which were misleading and perhaps did not want to find the right solution, but now we have an opportunity to fix that, and we do have to do as much as we can to ensure that especially our children are safe in their schools, and very good that you're sponsoring legislation in that regard. I would have absolutely no problem in doing the same, and doing more. I think there's always more we can do. You know, we're still in a process of fixing a lot of the previous administrations' problems that have been created in the long term for New York City. So yes.
Let's go to our first questioner, which would be Howard Collins, who is the chair of, the president of the Borum Hill Association, which is right where we're located now.
Yep, thank you. Let me see. This is, how much time do we have for the answer? I have to...
For the answer?
For the answer, they have two minutes each?
Is this Jeffrey? Are you answering the formal questions?
No, but I mean, for them, I think I need to narrow the questions while I'm asking. Is it, they have two minutes each? Is it, they have two minutes each for response?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm going to cut to the chase. I'm going to hit a couple of things. First of all, AD Flatbush as proposed is my topic. A lot of people in the room here are part of the opposition. First of all, we view the EIS processes as flawed. We believe it puts the City Planning Office in a position of being the respondent, not the driver. Steve, you mentioned gentrification of rising rents, that's in affordable housing. Rising commercial rents, no protection for small business. Reduced quality of life, which doesn't get examined fully in the EIS, because it can be responded to with, "I'm sorry, we can't mitigate those effects." In the last couple of weeks, the Comperla put out a statement about the loss of city revenue due to subway delays. We have 75 units, 7,500 units of housing coming online before AD Flatbush gets developed with its 900 units. So, there are actually two questions here for both of you. AD Flatbush as proposed, good idea, bad idea? And also, the more, the bigger question is, how can a better balance be established to preserve our neighborhoods, and this is not just my neighborhood's question, while we push for growth in New York City? So, good idea, bad idea? And how do we balance our need for growth, what I'll call super gentrification, and still protect the neighborhoods that exist?
You want to go first?
Sure.
So, I haven't come to a conclusion right just yet on AD Flatbush. I don't think, I think that it's, there's problematic elements to it, for sure. I think with, so with any application, you know, it's, an application is rarely entirely great or entirely bad. Every once in a while, I think that there was just a project that came through the Council, Community Board and Council, the ICL project, I think it was the only time I've ever seen a unanimous vote on anything, right? And that was an unanimous vote to approve. So, AD Flatbush has problematic elements. First off, FAR 18, that is much greater than any other surrounding FAR. You know, when you take a step back from it, the challenge with that particular site is that it's really three different neighborhoods converging on one half of a block. It is Borum Hill, coming from the south and across the street, on State Street. It is downtown Brooklyn, coming from the north and the west. And it's Fort Greene, coming from, from the east. And so, while it is, there are ground stones across the street on State Street, right across the street, 50, 60 feet away. But on the other side of Skimmerhorn Street, you have, you know, an equivalent of an R10, I believe, that is directly across the street. And so, all of these things are converging. At the same time, you have a school there right now, in a building, that is not an appropriate building for a high school. And it wasn't an appropriate building for a high school six years ago, or seven years ago, when it first got put in there, or eight years ago, when it was a Metropolitan Corporate Academy. And it's not an appropriate building now, because it's a 125-year-old building. And so, the longer that we have children in that building, we're doing a disservice to them. So, I agree, Howard, that it's not, two minutes is not enough to talk about this. But as proposed, I don't think, I mean, it's not, I don't think it's acceptable right now, as proposed, for sure. But it's, but this is something that we have to have a community discussion about.
Right. Well, AD Flatbush actually is within the limits of Borum Hill. It borders two other areas, downtown Brooklyn and Brooklyn Heights. But at the same time, AD Flatbush is going to be two skyscrapers. They go way above the far limit. Khalil Gibran International Academy isn't actually going to be relocated. They're going to have to sit through that construction above their heads of a skyscraper for about eight or 10 years, which is completely unacceptable. And on top of that, the conditions within the school were not so bad. It was not failing, it was not falling apart. And I believe that the actual baiting of schools to fall apart, or their conditions having been so bad, to allow a developer to be the only one to come in and save the day is the wrong way to go about selling our public assets.
I would respectfully disagree on at least one point, which is that the conditions are actually very bad in that school. And they, so, 20 years ago, there wasn't a school there. It was back offices for the POE. They didn't think it was appropriate 20 years ago. The school was built, that, that building was built, part of it was built in the 1850s, part of it was built in the 1880s or 1890s. It is, it's not, at this point, inappropriate, I mean, the hallways are, you know, they're just not appropriate for, like, high-school-age kids. This is, this proposal was brought by the Education Construction Fund, which, by the way, I mean, part of this is actually understanding...
No, that's not even, how we present development.
Hold on.
Education Construction Fund actually came to me before Alloy was, was, before an RFP went out. So they came to me about a year ago, well before Alloy's. They owned an adjacent building, but, but that's, that's a fact. So, the, part of the issue is that, this is a, so basically, the structure of Education Construction Fund, which is an authority that was established in the 60s...
Let me interrupt a second. We're giving two minutes of main responses, then one minute each of rebuttal.
Got it.
And if you could take over, there's a clock ran out.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
So, please finish up.
So, basically, this is, this is an authority that is within the city of New York, whose entire mission is to try to do development projects that are attached to schools and other city-owned property to essentially leverage private development to build new schools. They're not the School Construction Authority, they're a different, they're entirely a different authority.
Part of the time, Steve.
And they, they are.
Okay, so, it's, I'm sorry.
They're a different authority, entirely.
One minute.
Under the state law, they're a different authority. So, it's, anyway, this is, ends up being a total comedy.
Right. Thank you for that. I think there's a point that you're missing, and I believe your intentions are good, but this is the point you're missing. Khalil Gibran International Academy falls within District 15 in terms of school districts. That district has $150 million to build new schools and has plans to do so, but can't find the space to do it. What is wrong with using those funds for improving the internal structure of a building that already exists? There's absolutely no need to build a skyscraper above it to allow Alloy to promote itself as the biggest builder in Brooklyn. There is none.
So, I agree. Sorry, you did ask why can't you use these $15 on this site? So Khalil Gibran is a high school, so those dollars are generally meant for middle schools and elementary schools. Secondly, this is what I was trying to say, is I brought that exact same question to, to ECF at our first or second meeting. How come you can't use SCA dollars that are already budgeted in the city budget? It's a different, it's a different authority, and ECF's, it's not, I, what they said, and I will continue to explore the state law around this, that enables those two authorities, but they can't, they can't draw down on SCA dollars, so city tax levy dollars, to build an ECF project. ECF projects have to be built entirely with the proceeds of an ECF sale. So, I asked that exact same question at my second meeting.
I think you're the same, time for responding then.
Sure. And it's good to ask those questions, but what happens with the follow-up? What happens when we don't put pressure on these people to actually find innovative ways to solve these issues? I believe there are alternatives for funding a school like Khalil Gibran. We don't have to sell it out to a huge developer like Alloy. I just believe that that's wrong. We're, we're selling it for pennies on the dollar. You know, we're also getting rid of a clinic that helps HIV and AIDS patients. We're getting rid of a lot of small businesses. And not to mention, we're approaching on the historic district of Borum Hill, which is a beautiful district of brownstones that deserves to be preserved as much as possible.
One of the things I just think is important...
No, 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 no. So, let me follow up on Howard's question a little bit, because one of the policies that's being left over from the Bloomberg administration that is being pursued today is the selling of public libraries.
Yeah.
For millionaire towers for people can live in. And using that public land to giving it away, basically, or selling it at a way-reduced rate to millionaires and billionaires, so that we can, and then rebuilding the libraries at a much smaller capacity. And that's a big issue in this district. So, is that proper to be giving away, a proper use of public land? To be giving it away for millionaire developers?
So, if, we're talking about the Brooklyn Heights Library sale, which I think is what everybody just wants to talk about and what I believe you're referring to. You know, that was not a project that I came up with, but we at the city council had to look at that, along with the community board, along with the Department of City Planning, along with the Borough President's Office, to try to decide what the right policy was there. The Brooklyn Public Library came to us at the outset with a $300 million capital needs gap. That's a fact. $300 million in capital needs throughout the entire system, because we have Carnegie branches, we have other old branches throughout the system. This isn't in downtown Brooklyn. This is in Canarsie, and Bay Ridge, and Bensonhurst, and Bushwick, and Bed-Stuy. This is in communities throughout the entire system. This particular site was already zoned for a high-rise. And what the proposal was, was to, to sell the property, replace the library, and I have the numbers, I went back and looked. There's actually going to be an increase in usable square footage between this site...
Oh, no.
That's, I'm just stating a fact. But it's, but it's not, because it's a condominium within a private development. The condominium is publicly owned, it's owned by the city of New York. It produced about $40 million for the Brooklyn Public Library with a $300 million gap. So, that is, that is for, that is for libraries in Sunset Park, it's libraries in Bushwick and Bed-Stuy, it's libraries throughout the system. This was a kind of single opportunity for BPL. I was not thrilled about having to look at this proposal and consider this proposal and approve it. But I thought that it was the responsible thing to do to the entire borough of Brooklyn to approve this because of the needs throughout the system.
Councilman Levin, were you not the one who said that 95% of your constituents don't want this library sold?
I don't ever recall saying that. I actually commissioned a poll that found about 50% of people did not want it. About 25% did this in 11201. And 25% were, were either didn't have an opinion or had been one about it. And that was, that was the poll that I did. I know that it's been repeated. I don't ever recall saying that.
You're on the record of saying it.
I don't recall, I don't, I don't know where I would have said that. I commissioned a poll, that I will cite, as saying about 50% were against it, 25 were in favor of it. I'm not saying it was a popular thing, and 25% were opposed. Dylan, this is about a month before the vote.
Great, okay.
You clearly did not listen to my interview with you on WBAI Radio then, which... I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Well, regardless, the problem with the Brooklyn Heights Library being sold is this. It's, again, another public asset being sold for pennies on the dollar to the great detriment of the community, which needs these libraries at a time when New York City is not short on money, at a time when library use and residents coming into Brooklyn is at an all-time high and growing exponentially every year. We need these spaces. We want our kids to be in a library reading a book. We don't want them to be on a park, or, or, sorry, on the street. You know, we want them to have a place to go. So, when you say that the library is bigger, fundamentally untrue. Untrue. 63,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet above ground? That's just, that's the numbers game. It's just untrue. And then when you say that 40 million was gained for other libraries, that's great. But that's the teardown value of the building. It's not the actual value of the building. So if you want to talk about the costs, then sure, let's talk about the costs. Let's be transparent about the costs, because we've still not gotten that answer.
I do have the numbers. So, the publicly accessible square footage in, prior to the building being closed and demoed, was 27,000 square feet of publicly accessible land, of publicly accessible space. There was a lot more that was in the two basements below that were originally built as fallout shelter. They were not publicly accessible, nor were they, I mean, they weren't really suitable for public access. 32,000 above ground. The new library is going to have 26,000, 26.5 thousand square feet above ground, and 5,000 that will be opened in the neighborhoods of Vinegar Hill and Dumbo. So between that, 26 plus 5, 31.5 thousand that is above grade, and 20, 28 of that is accessible. So, it's, it's an increase of about 500 square feet of accessible, of accessible space.
What happens to the business library?
The business, the business, but that was including the business library. That was including the business library. That 32,000 was actually including the business library. And there will be business library services there. So, I, because the business library, in a lot of ways, functioned in a, similarly to the neighborhood library. So that was, that's actually referring to all other states.
And what about the staffs? Libraries hold books. We actually want to know how many books are actually going to be held within the library. Is it going to be the same number?
Well, it, when it was built, it predated modern library systems, where they don't have to locate all of the business books. A lot of these were kind of like old reference books from the 60s and 70s. That was all being stored below, below grade there. You know, nowadays, we have a much more advanced system because of technology and computers than we did in the, in the early 60s, when it was, when it was built. And so it really, I mean, I do defer to the librarians, and the librarians are the people that I talked to there, is that, when they said, "Look, I mean, we don't, that's not really a needed thing." A lot of, they were actually holding books for when they do the library sale. It was, I mean, I went down there, it wasn't as if it was like a humming, you know, reference stacks, where they were like pulling books out, you know, hundreds of books at a time. And it was, a lot of those needs can actually be addressed at the central branch and get out to the neighborhood branches in a, in a pretty expedited way, things of the technology.
I think all of us can appreciate that library technology is developing. And you're right on that point. However, when it comes to actually having access to these books and access even through historical reference books, that is something that all students, especially with so many schools, so many universities, we have all the courts around there. I mean, we, we need access to historical references. That's just, you know, it's inexcusable to actually remove the staffs and to lower the amount of books that are within a library. Yes, things are being digitalized. I have a lot of friends who are librarians, and they would appreciate me saying, they love their books. They want their books to stay. And I believe that students need to have access to varied amounts of literature, so that we're building our culture, so that we're improving their lives and giving them a full breadth of knowledge that they may not have access to at home. They may not have access to Amazon Prime and be able to buy all these books on their own. That is why the library is there. That's why it's public good.
So we'll now move on to Catherine Davis. Do you have a question?
Yes, I have some concerns about education. So, I know, Collins, from 11, when you, I believe it was in 2012, you were supporting public schools, and you were wanting to limit charter schools, at least that's my understanding. And charter schools were being given space in public schools. But now, the situation in Brooklyn has greatly changed economically. And we have schools being built, a new school was built in a high-rise. And so, I have a great deal of concern that children who are mid-income, low-income are not going to have access to the same resources with regard to their education. And so I would like actually both of you to address this issue, because we have a situation where low-income and homeless children are not having access to education, are not being properly educated. There's a lot of absences... properly educated, there's a lot of absences in school with poor children. So I would like to know how the resources that are being brought into Brooklyn are going to be used with equanimity for all the children in Brooklyn, not just those who come in with rich parents.
That's a great question. So with regard to, and I think there were a lot of good points in the question, with regard to homeless children, so in our committee, we actually had a hearing two weeks ago on this specific issue of homeless children in the New York City school system. Children residing in shelter, children that are doubled up, children that are staying with aunts and uncles. There are over 80,000 children in New York City that meet the federal Machinibento definition of homeless in our school system. And what we've seen over the last few years, and this is a very troubling statistic, is that the percentage of children that are going into the homeless system, that are placed in a shelter within the borough where they go to school, went from about 75%, actually under Bloomberg, to about 50% now. That is a shocking and very disturbing statistic. And that is, there's a lot of, we're trying to unravel why that is happening, a lot of it has to do with capacity within the system. I actually think that there also is issues around effectiveness of how, how the system, how units are coming up within the shelter system and being able to have a better response to effectively place families where they, where they need to be. But we need to do much, much better on that. When it comes to making sure that all children have access to the resources that are coming on, whether it's in a new building in a high-rise, so a couple of years ago, I and District 13 CEC established the Downtown Brooklyn School Working, Schools Working Group to talk about these very issues. And District 13 has done some amazingly innovative things when it comes to addressing school segregation, because the schools in District 13 are segregated, the elementary schools are segregated, the middle schools are less segregated, but there's still some segregation. And we need to be looking at how we are pushing the de Blasio administration to do better in breaking down racial and ethnic lines when it comes to our schools, making sure, and economic lines, making sure that all children have access to the best educational resources, not just in any school district, but actually within the entire city.
I think Councilman Lemon is right. We should be pushing the de Blasio administration to do more and to do better by our students. I believe that charter schools, which are cohabitated within public schools, allow for a poor door, allow for students to not have access to STEM programs and gyms and auditoriums and not be able to go up on the upper floors where the charter school kids are. And I think that kind of culture of segregation is not just in our schools, it's in our housing, it's in, you know, in our libraries, it's in a lot of places where we don't want it to be, but especially in our schools. Our public schools, especially in District 33, have been underfunded for decades, decades. This is now one of the most attractive places to develop, it's one of the most attractive places for people to come and live. Our budgets and our resources for those students should be matching with that attractiveness. We have so many resources that we could pull on, we just have to think a little bit more innovatively. So when it comes to charter schools, absolutely there needs to be a balance. All, all parents want the best for their kids, they want to send them to the best schools. And charter schools do seem like a great option, but when there's no oversight, there's no transparency, there's no union labor, then it's, and there's a revolving door of teachers, then it's very hard to see where the benefit is. So, and, and what that actually does is push more pressure, put more pressure on the resources that public schools actually do have and that they can cut away from the system. So absolutely, we need to be finding innovative ways that we can resource these schools. But again, I don't believe that public-private partnerships are a good way to do that, because essentially they are good for the short term, they have a short influx of money, but then in the long term, we're sold down the river.
Well, simply, I'm wondering how it would be possible with so much investment coming into Brooklyn, why can legislation not be passed to just siphon a percentage of that income to the public good rather than exploiting buildings or systems in order to give benefit to the real estate developers?
Great question. So, I mean, I think in, in large part it is. I mean, in terms of our general tax fund, the New York City school system represents about a third of our, of our tax expenditure at any given year. It's, it's, you know, it's about, I think about $25 or $26 billion at this point to do, out of a budget of about $88 billion. So it's, it's, it is, it remains our number one expenditure in our city year after year. The challenge is, I mean, particularly with charter schools, I mean, one of the things that's, that's a challenge is right now, the governor and the state legislature a couple of years ago cast a law to get back at de Blasio in a lot of ways, for, to make, to put, to, to say that the city has to provide, so the, the state approves a charter, so the SUNY State Border Regents approves a charter application. They, they say, okay, we got our charter, now we want to go into New York City Public School. The, the de Blasio administration cannot say no now, according to state law, because Governor Cuomo proposed and passed that law, got that law passed. If, if, if the de Blasio administration does say no, or any city administration says no, then they have to then pay for them to be located in some other place, in a Catholic school, a place like, you know, in, in, if the Catholic school population has been declining, they'd have to pay for it. So that has become an immense challenge because it tied the city's hands in some ways on, on what we can do vis-à-vis charter schools. Meanwhile, the charter expenditure continues to increase by hundreds of millions of dollars every single year. And it is, it is absolutely out of control because the state grants the charters, SUNY, New York State Border Regents, and under the Bloomberg administration, the New York City Department of Education granted these charters, then the city was left on the hook to pay because it's per pupil, per pupil dollar amount, meaning that it follows the student. And the charter expenditure grew by hundreds of hundreds of millions of dollars and totally unchecked. So it was a very frustrating experience.
I'm glad you mentioned Catholic schools. So Catholic schools have been on the decline in, in northern Brooklyn, where you and I live, for a number of years. My own school, St. Jerome Methodist, was closed, turned into luxury housing. St. Cecilia's, St. Anthony's, there, St. Anthony's, so many schools have closed. These buildings were either laying vacant, or they were sold to developers for pennies on the dollar. There is space to build more schools, we do have the space. The Catholic Church would be willing to sell them, I can tell you that much. And, you know, so we, we do have the budget, we do have the opportunity, we do have the space. So I think we just need to have a little bit bigger thinking and just not be so caught up in, you know, what the current predicaments are, let's think about the future, let's think about innovative ways to solve these problems. Again, Brooklyn is growing, there are so many people who want to come here and move here and, and raise their children here. How are we going to put them through school? How are we going to educate them when student-teacher ratios are at an all-time high, when there's, it's almost impossible to get a seat at a school for your student come September? You know, these are huge concerns, and they're only going to grow more and more unless we solve them now.
We'll now go to John Charlton from the Independent, the Independent newspaper.
Thank you, Mitchell, and welcome to everybody here tonight. The Independent, we're based up on the second floor office here in this building, and just want to encourage everybody who's here tonight, if you haven't already had a chance to patronize the café, please consider doing that. What Melissa's doing for us tonight and really every day in keeping the columns open is a tremendous public service. And you can also grab the latest copy of our paper in the rack at the door when you head out. All those plugs aside, moving on to my question. We've been talking a lot about the impact of gentrification tonight. Another way we see that impact is on the destabilization of small businesses, both in this district and throughout much of the city, and in particular with the difficulties they have around the commercial lease renewals and soaring, soaring rents. And I wanted to ask both candidates, you know, what your positions were on the Small Business Job Survival Act, which would create a much more of a balance and power between commercial tenants and commercial landlords. And that, that proposed measure has been in City Council for something like 30 years, and so you could explain why it is continuing to languish and what you might do to try to expedite that, while we still have some small businesses left, and of course, I'd like to hear your thoughts as well.
So why don't we start with Victoria this time and mix it up?
Sure, absolutely. So we do need to find innovative ways for how we're going to preserve our small businesses, our mom-and-pop shops that really are disappearing in Brooklyn, especially with something like, like negotiating powers that small businesses can have with landlords. Absolutely, that's something that we should be passing. That's just a small stepping stone for how we're going to save these small businesses. I have seen doors closed on some of my favorite restaurants and shops and small, small businesses all over Greenpoint where I grew up. I've seen it happen in Williamsburg where I went to school and where I, you know, frequently hang out with a lot of my friends. And there is a revolving door of businesses who come in, can't afford the lease when it gets renewed, leave. And, you know, that doesn't build character, it doesn't build a community, it doesn't help these businesses to be a part of our community, and we want that. Brooklyn is a diverse, beautiful, amazing, open society, but we want people to have a stake here, to find roots here, to actually contribute to our community. And being a small business is one of the hardest things that you can actually, you can actually do right now as an entrepreneur. So absolutely, we need to find innovative ways to preserve those relationships and to ensure that they have the negotiating power that they need to negotiate their leases. And especially just another point I want to make about the L train closure, because that's going to be a huge factor in, in people renewing their leases and people having a really steep fall in foot traffic for 18 months or longer, that the L train is going to be closed permanently for, for that time period. So what we're going to do to combat, you know, tourism, a fall in tourism and a fall in foot traffic is something that the MTA still hasn't come out and said that they would reveal. They don't have a really good plan, in my opinion, 200 diesel buses is not enough. I believe that there's a lot more that we can do to preserve those small businesses and ensure that they actually can survive through L train closure.
So I'm proud to be a cosponsor of the Small Business Job Survival Act, if it's the right legislation to pursue. You're right, it's been in the council for 30 years. My understanding of why it hasn't moved in all that time is because there's always concerns among, you know, we have great attorneys at the New York City Council, there've been many over the last 30 years, and there's always been a concern about the legality of mandating this type of arbitration when, in a, you know, essentially a fair market relationship. I don't agree with that, and to be honest with you, my opinion on it is, let, let people sue about it. Let's pass the bill, and if you want to sue, they could sue, and then it can, and it can be adjudicated in court. I think it's the right thing to do now, because, and should, it was the right thing to do 30 years ago, it's definitely the right thing to do now, because, I mean, look, right on the corner here, Jesse's, 25 years, wonderful store, family-owned business, I got forced out, nothing against the new tenants or anything, but it's like high-end Australian plates, right? That's the new store. And I don't know them, I don't go there for lunch, you know, like, those, the, the people at Jesse's, they were a wonderful, wonderful family-owned business. They got forced out because their rent got quadruple. One thing that I would like to explore if, if re-elected, on top of the Small Business Job Survival Act, I do want that to pass, and I will cosponsor it again in the coming term, I'll try to be the lead sponsor, the, the current sponsor is Annabelle Palma, she's term-limited out, so I'll, I'm going to put in to see if I can be the lead sponsor. On top of that, I think that we actually have to look at the issue, and I credit the Atlantic Avenue LDC for bringing this issue to my attention, is, is the need to examine our commercial business tax. So if you own a building, you have a commercial space, a place like Atlantic Avenue, your commercial taxes are extraordinary. That drives up a significant, and to a significant degree, the rent, because landlords have to try to pass that along somewhere. I'm not saying that all landlords do that, but if they want to be able to make ends meet, that's one, that's one thing. So I want to reform how commercial property taxes are actually established here on commercial trips like Atlantic Avenue.
Want not to respond if you'd like?
Great. That's wonderful that you hope to cosponsor it again, but I believe the question was, why hasn't it been done yet? Is it for lack of time, or lack of resource, or lack of desire?
It's, are, are the legislative councils at the City Council have always prevailed upon the speaker for the last 30 years, that they don't think that the job, that the bill would stand up to a challenge in court. If, if there's, there's an institutional degradation to the council when we lose cases in court because it further curtails our legislative authority, so they're concerned about maintaining the maximum amount of legislative authority that the council has, and so there's, you know, these are lawyers not opining on the merits of the legislation or anything like that, they're looking at it and saying, we think it might not stand up in court, and therefore it's not advised that the speaker actually move it. And so that's been, that's been the, been the discussion that we've had, because it has over, you know, has a majority of council members that support it.
I understand that, you know, you're worried about your reputations, but sometimes it takes a little bit of courage to step out and put yourself on the line for something, and I think this is something that is hurting people. People are desperate to have some sort of negotiating power. Why would it take 30 years to pass something like that? That would be unheard of in private industry.
I think, I think, and I'm, again, I support, I'm cosponsoring the bill. I want that bill to pass as soon as possible, but the, the lawyers at the council, there's, the council unfortunately does not have a very strong legislative hand often. We are curtailed by the state and preempt, or curtailed by the, by the, by mayoral administration as per our charter and preempted by state legislation. And so in a lot of ways, we're, we're not that strong of a legislative body, and that is by as per our charter and as per the state constitution, and so, and so we don't want to...
I think John has a follow-up to this.
So, I mean, that's, that's been the challenge, is that I don't, I think the institutionalists at the council don't want to degrade the legislative authority of the council.
I mean, my understanding has been that where the problem is that both the mayor and the current City Council Speaker have kept this bottled up because commercial landlords don't want it either, and it seems like a little bit of a shuffle to blame it on the lawyers. And we're going to have a new City Council Speaker starting in next January, and whichever one of you all is elected, will be weighing in on who that next City Council Speaker would be. So would you make this, you know, when you're deciding who that next Speaker would be, how much would you put this forward, that like, it's been 30 years, are you ready to speak?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I, I, I will tell you, I mean, Melissa Marfimorito is, I don't think that she's like in the pocket of commercial landlords, to be honest with you. I mean, she's a pretty left-wing Speaker in all, I mean, her record has, has borne that out. I think that there's, I mean, I think that that's, that's a pretty, I mean, that's, that's, she's very proud of her, of her left-wing bona fides. And, and so I don't, it's not, it's not for lack of, it's not for, for want of political will, it's, it's truly that that is the issue. Again, I will, I agree with you, and I will actually prevail upon all the speaker candidates, do it anyway. I think that if the time is right, to do it anyway, and if somebody wants to sue on it, they should sue on it. But, but we should, we should pass the bill, it, it has the support to pass, it's got over 26 sponsors. So it should, it will pass if brought to the floor. The question is that it's probably not going to be happening over the next two and a half months, and so the next Speaker, absolutely, whether I'm a council member or not, I will advocate that, 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 that be done, for sure.
Thank you for your follow-up question. I think when it does come to commercial interests, we have to consider that a lot of the political machine is beholden to the real estate industry and to billionaire developers. That's just a fact. So when something is held up, we have to question, what is the underlying purpose of that? When we scratch beneath the surface, what's really going on? And so when it comes to something like a small... And so when it comes to something like a small mom-and-pop shop trying to negotiate a new lease, and there's a giant developer trying to buy up that property in order to build a billion-dollar development, then yeah, they don't have very much power. And so it's up to the City Council to be champions for that small business and to champion legislation that's going to be put forth. If it has enough support in the City Council, then there's absolutely no reason not to put it forth. But I think this is a common tactic. And I believe it's a tactic you learned way before you entered City Council, which has to do with nominal theatrical political motivations and political challenges without actually putting forth a real fight.
Okay, I just, oh, I'm sorry.
One more minute each. Go ahead.
That's one thing, that's kind of impugning the entire City Council and saying that we're just sponsoring a bill for show, but don't actually believe in the substance of the bill. And that is absolutely 100% untrue. And I think that that's a lot of people's integrity that's shared questioning.
Ooh, that's a terrible thing to do.
Well, I serve with these people, I mean, I serve with these people day in and day out. And a lot of them are, almost all of them that I...
I'm sure they're upstanding citizens. That's not the point. When it comes to political theatrics, we've seen way too much of that in New York City. That's not something that anyone in this room can say that they've not seen.
Okay, I agree with you. I personally feel beholden to the residents of the 33rd District. And in this instance, I feel beholden to small businesses that are, that, small businesses that put their lives and savings into their business and are operating on the margins. I applaud their courage for doing that, their passion for their business. I think it's, I mean, we tell the...
Then why is it still not working? I mean, this, it goes back to the same theatrics.
Really unfortunate, that's, it is a, there are a lot of people that serve in this council
Absolutely, absolutely. And they serve with integrity, Councilman Levin. They serve with honesty. But here's the thing, when you're not transparent, when you have legislation that's been stuck in the pipeline for 30 years, we, the people and the public, have to question why. We have to question, what's the fundamental, underlying problem behind something like this? And that doesn't mean that I'm downgrading the entire City Council or the state or the city government. But when it comes to things like this, this is a perfect example of where you don't actually challenge and fight. And this is something that's needed. We are in an absolute crisis in this city when it comes to political machinations and distractions from what's really hurting people, hurting small businesses, hurting people who are homeowners and renters and want to stay within the district or the area where they have been born or raised their kids or had their business for 30 years.
One more question from the panel. That's from Catherine Swan.
Hi. So what I wanted to address is privatization of public space in our parks. And you're speaking now... So I write Washington Square Park blog and covered beyond Washington Square Park, privatization at other parks in New York City. And also wrote a series at Huffington Post exploring a lot of the issues that come up around this. And so even though they're not being sold technically, in a way, they are being sold in a different way when a public-private partnership is put in charge of these parks. We're seeing tremendous changes to the parks. And Washington Square Park is one of the few large parks that does not have a private entity running it. And that's why it's been able to retain what's so special about it, although there is a group trying to do that and there's a big pushback against it. So the Bloomberg administration was big proponents of public-private partnerships. And it's not that, it's not like a situation like Brown vs. Park. It's just where a private entity runs the park versus the City Parks Department. And that's the case less and less. And so in this district, McCarran Park is run by a private entity, the Open Space Alliance. And they, you know, and residents around that area have had issues with poor decision-making and lack of responsiveness to their issues. And at Brooklyn Bridge Park, that's a little different situation, but also run by a private entity. And now we see how the view of the Brooklyn Bridge is compromised and the housing has gone beyond what was originally proposed. And so, you know, it's this endless push by the powers that be. There are commercial interests behind this. There, you know, if there's real estate, these entities benefit those interests and not the public. And so how do we balance? My question is, there's this idea that the private sector is better than the public sector. And that is increasingly shown not to be true. And there is this push to privatize basically everything when the City Parks Department is perfectly capable of running the parks. And the problem with the privatization is that the public spaces become corrupted in some way. We see that they become commercialized, corporatized, lack of accountability, lack of transparency, change in use, diminished use. I mean, it's very well, you know, seen at Bryant Park, Madison Square Park. So how do we get the parks back in the hands of the Parks Department and sort of push back against this privatization concept?
Thank you for that question. It's actually a really wonderful point. Brooklyn has some of the most amazing waterfront parks and waterfront views in the entirety of New York City. It's incumbent upon all of us as leaders and representatives in order to actually preserve that space and not sell it, sell it short for pennies on the dollar to private developers. We've seen that happen in Williamsburg. Williamsburg is quoted all around the city and all throughout the country as an example of what happens when you let private industry completely roll over our public spaces. So now we're stuck with a ferry link that looks like a private backyard of some, you know, some valet parking. It's absolutely disgusting what happened there. And it happened, unfortunately, with all due respect, under your watch, Councilman Levin. There was a lot more that could have been done with Brooklyn Bridge Park. There was a lot more that could have been done to preserve the view and to save what little bit we have left of that green space. And now we have these public-private partnerships, which give an influx of money. Great, here's a few million dollars. Wonderful, maybe you can paint a park bench. But then 10, 20, 30 years down the line, our next generation, our children, don't have that park anymore. They don't have that view anymore. For instance, you know, the historic views in Brooklyn Bridge Park is the last one left in New York City. And that's completely compromised. Because, oh, we didn't, we forgot to tell the BHA about a statute of limitations? I mean, these are simple things. It took one phone call for you to prevent that from happening. And unfortunately, it seems again that there is some theatrical, some political theatrics being put forth here instead of an actual fight. I see that being a trend way too often with way too many developments in all of our public assets, not just our libraries, not just our parks and waterfront views, but also our hospitals and everything else, including our housing like NYCHA.
So first off, I think that my record bears out that I stand up for public spaces. I'm a member of the board of Brooklyn Bridge Park. I voted against every single private development, every single time. That is my record. I oppose Pier 6. I opposed Pier 1. Pier 1 was already approved well before I voted against the disposition of the site. I joined the lawsuit. I gave an affidavit to support Save the Do Now when it came to, unfortunately, it doesn't quite work like that. You can't just pick up the phone and make a call and everything.
You were on the board, and yet you didn't inform the BHA that there was a statute of limitations for that lawsuit?
It wasn't a statute of limitations.
Yes, there was. Now it's being kicked out of court.
They were, I gave an affidavit to support that position. It didn't have to do with statute of limitations. They, they, they argued that the judge basically ended up siding with the city on an absolutely erroneous argument.
I'm quoting Martha Dietz right now when I say that.
What I will say is, on top of that, so McCarran Park is never going to get privatized. McCarran Park, OSA does not, does not run McCarran Park. There was, at some point, OSA, and the OSA executive director and administrator for North Brooklyn Parks was one and the same. It was the same person. That has since been separated out. And so the North Brooklyn administrator for the Parks Department runs McCarran. And there is no way that that is becoming a privatized or public-private park. And just to my record as well, you know, last year, I was able to work with the de Blasio administration to acquire that last site that's part of Bushwick Inlet Park. It took over a year of negotiation. It cost the city a lot of money. But the de Blasio administration acquired that parcel and made that park whole. That will be a public park for generations. There are no buildings there. When I was asked, when I was, they wanted to sell the property to one of the large developers in the city, I called up that developer. I said, there is no way that that is going to get rezoned under me.
Time.
Absolutely not. That is going to be a private park. And eventually, the city did the right thing. But that was a fight that was the community-led. And I was happy to do my job to make sure that that actually happened. And that's going to be there for permanently.
That's wonderful, Councilman Levin. I'm really, really happy that we got Bushwick Inlet Park. We paid $160 million for that little piece of land. But it's a beautiful park. Well, it's, it is. When you compare it to the fact that the entirety of Brooklyn waterfront in our district is being taken over by development. You know, you've got this one little piece of land, which is wonderful, and we need it. We need as much of it as we can get. But then you sell us out when it comes to negotiating with developers for waterfronts and park views and promenades that they promised us, and then they never deliver. Case in point, what's happening in Greenpoint right now in our backyards. All of those developments, when the plans were put through, they promised us green space. They promised us parks and promenades and beautiful cafes and places to lounge. And I know it's going to end up looking just like Williamsburg, which looks like a private access promenade just for residents and a valet parking. I mean, this is exactly what's going to happen all across the district if we don't negotiate properly.
I wasn't there when Greenpoint-Williamsburg got rezoned in 2005. I wasn't a council member. I was only here in New York City for a year and a half at that time. So I wasn't there to do that. What I've done in the last seven years is fight to make sure that the promised parks become a reality. And I had to fight really hard to do that. When it comes to Box Street Park, I had to fight really hard to do that. When it comes to the expanding Barge Park, I had to fight really hard to do that. And so there were, that was rezoned. I'm not thrilled about the 2005 zoning either. I live up there, too. I'm not, I mean, that's not, I'm going to raise my family there. I am not happy about that rezoning, nor do I like it in any bit whatsoever. However, it was rezoned before I got to the council. My job has been to make sure that those things that were promised are actually delivered. And that has been, you know, a full-time job for the last seven and a half years.
I'm sure it's very difficult. But I'm talking about the actual negotiations for these developments. You know, you get a tiny little park space. Yes, it's difficult to fight for these things. And it's amazing when you get them. And I congratulate you for doing that work. But when it comes to the actual private developments of our waterfront, when they promised us bells and whistles, they promised us 30% portable housing and two, three-bedroom units for families, and then they only deliver studios and 20%, that, you continue to vote for it. So how is that a good negotiation? How is that helping the community? It's not. It's backpedaling.
Okay, I just, well, I'm sorry, but I'll take exception to, it's not just the, Bushwick Inlet Park is a 27-acre park. I mean, that is a, that is, it's going to, acre for acre, it's probably going to be the most expensive park in the country. And it's going to be a world-class park. We've, it took a long time to get the de Blasio administration, we didn't look at it initially as their responsibility because this was a Bloomberg thing, the Bloomberg administration's thomuses. And it took a long time. The community did an amazing job of making sure, I mean, it's not an insignificant amount of park space to them. They worked, they worked really hard for 20 years.
I never said it was, that they didn't work hard, Councilman Levin. And I take exception to that as well. I'm part of the community. And I know the people who fought that fight. I know them personally because they've seen me since I was yay high.
Okay, no, but it was not an insignificant amount of space.
Well, when you compare it to the rest of the waterfront, I'm sorry, yes, it is. It's not enough. You know, we were promised promenades. We were promised parks. We were promised beautiful cafes and areas where we can lounge. And that's not there anymore. Look at Williamsburg. Look at the Ferry Point. The Ferry Point is a public access link for transport. And look at the way it looks. It looks like some private access area that no one can access unless you're a resident of a luxury skyscraper. That's what's going to happen to Greenpoint as well. That's the fear of everyone that lives in my neighborhood. All of my neighbors and all of my friends who still are able to afford to live there are terribly worried that that's going to happen. And Williamsburg waterfront is cited as an every single example of what not to do with our public spaces.
And then we will move on after that.
Okay, thank you, thank you both. I just had a follow-up to Councilmember Levin. As far as, I would say, OSA, but okay, OSA.
Use your microphone.
My impression was always that there was a time when they were running that park. That they were, it was the same. The park administrator and the head of OSA were running the park. And it was technically under a public-private partnership. And you're saying that's no longer the case?
No, that's definitely no longer the case. OSA still exists. And the head of OSA is more involved in advocacy stuff now and supplemental stuff. So they'll do extra cleanup and, you know, but the operations of McCarran Park and all other North Brooklyn parks are within the jurisdiction of the Parks Department. A woman named Mary Sally is the North Brooklyn Parks Administrator. And so it used to be, so the previous one was a guy named Ed Janoff. Ed had the role of both the head of OSA and the North Brooklyn Parks Administrator. Ed, Ed had the role of both the head of OSA and the North Brooklyn Parks administrator. And then before, it was Stephanie Thayer, and she had that same structure. But currently, Mary is the North Brooklyn Parks administrator, and a guy named Joe Mayock is the executive director of OSA. And they, they work together, but it's certainly not one and the same, and, and there's no, you know, there's no Brooklyn Bridge Park-ification of North Brooklyn parks, I can assure you.
Okay, no, that's great, because that is what the problem is about the other parks that are, you know, privatized, is that there's this dual role, which was previously the case, which is very refreshing to hear that that was separated out, because I do think it makes a big difference, yeah. And if we could have that happen at the other parks, that would be something that, you know, to work on, and I think that would, that would be really important, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
So we've come to the end, unless Howard has a follow-up, because I gave everybody else a chance to do a follow-up question, but not Howard, so why don't we do that?
Actually, I had a follow-up about commercial space. The Warham Hill Association was asked to be, join a group of people in Park Slope to save key food. And where you have leverage with a developer, which we did because of the, that, the way that land was being rezoned, and the developer didn't want to wait until 2022 to have that as a right, gave us an opportunity to negotiate losing a large supermarket, but to force the developer through negotiation to come up with a 20,000-plus square foot, square foot market. At the mayor's town hall the other night, a woman who was part of our group got up and asked about laundromats. So I know you're sponsored legislation, but I'm going to tell either one of you or both of you, I think the legislation that's being proposed doesn't really, there's a lot of opportunity that's missed. So here's a woman, senior, who was physically challenged, who during the key food fight said, where do I do my laundry? Ironically, it's the same developer. The same developer seems to be Googling laundromat in Brooklyn and then buying the property across from Wyckoff Gardens, as she said to us, I have no washer-dry hook up in my building. And also then the other nearest one on Atlantic Avenue is their new condos. So I don't know, it's not the American way, but whether or not, whether or not that's accomplished through some clever zoning rule. If you destroyed a small business, maybe you need to put in footprints, not parking, but footprints that echo what was there, and you can build your condos on top of it. I'm just going to mention that it's a, commercial rent control is one thing, but the loss of small businesses like Jesse's, as more and more buildings are being developed, this kind of coffee shop square footage, dry cleaners, laundromats, basic services, all go the way of the dodo. And, you know, when it comes to the lifeblood of the city, whether it's small business, disruptive innovation is really not what we need. So I don't really have a question there, and I don't know that there is an answer other than socialism. Bring Bernie back up. But it's a real, it's a real issue that, that the legislation, and it's no offense to you, but the legislation doesn't, doesn't go far enough, and we need.
And it doesn't speak to that.
Yeah, and I mentioned this to Scott Stringer. I said, at what point do we legislate that there needs to be a supermarket in your building, and I don't care who you are, yeah, you'll get two more floors if you put in a 20,000-square foot market, that might be a trade-off. But it's not even on the radar. That kind of, what do we need? What does the community need in basic services? It's not even on the radar.
Well, thank you for that, Howard. So here's the thing, and here's the problem with, with the situation we're facing. I saw it during my time in London. I saw the gentrification of East London and the, the overdevelopment of even West London, parts, places like Kensington, Chelsea, and Mayfair. You go around these places at night, and all the lights are off, because they're third, fourth bid homes for the rich and famous, and they're luxury investment properties, they're tax havens. And when you're talking to billionaire developers, the bottom line is the most important part of what they're trying to do. They don't care about what the community needs. They don't care about laundromats and supermarkets and mom-and-pop shops and great little diners where we can have a bite to eat for, you know, five fifty. They don't care about any of those things because they don't use them. They're, I mean, they're buying up these properties in order to develop them, to sell them. That is what they're there to do. And you cannot fault a businessman for making a buck, but when we don't have any protective legislation against that kind of criminal usurpation of our, our, our land, of our communities, and turning them into luxury towers that are built for people who want to stay in New York City one day a year, that's not right. New York and Brooklyn in general has always serviced the working class, the middle class, who maybe work in the city, but they come home to Brooklyn. They need these assets, they need these areas in order to live here. So if we're constantly giving that up, then, and there's no one there to fight to give it back to us, then it's going to continue to happen, and we're going to go the way of London. And that would be a really, really sad thing to see.
There have been innovative things that we've been able to do with the council to protect small businesses. So, but oftentimes, it's on, it's in the process of a rezoning. So, for example, you know, Brewer was really good at getting, when they did a, when she did a, this is a few years back, rezoning of the Upper West Side, ensuring that the footprints were going to be smaller, so that they're not having Duane Reade's or, you know, other CDSs or any, any of these kind of large pharmacies that put the small pop pharmacies out of business. There, we are somewhat limited in terms of legislation, and we can't say, if you buy a laundromat, you have to replace it in kind. That's, you know, wouldn't really stand up to, to legal scrutiny. That being said, we can do innovative things like breaking up the space, saying you can't have any square footage of commercial space over 10,000 square feet or 5,000 square feet, whatever the number is. And on top of that, you can, case by case, if a private application comes forward, try to negotiate to the extent possible with a developer without, it's not legal to mandate it, but if you have a willing developer, to negotiate what the commercial space will look like. So case in point, Casimeteus, I'm not crazy about John Casimeteus, right? But he, he did that, the, the project on our Myrtle Avenue, seven, eight years ago, or five, six years from this point, and negotiated with the council, with the community, to put in a Red Apple supermarket there. So unfortunately, it has, it ends up sometimes being case by case, but that's, that is the role of the city council member often. I mean, it's the role of the community board, too, and the borough president, any entity that has a role in the Yule process, the, the community in general, to, to, to fight for these things and, and try to ensure that those are the, the priorities for the community are reflected as a project comes through, so.
So we've come to the end of this section, and we're actually only a little bit over time, surprisingly. So why don't we take like a seven-minute break? Well, I need to go to the bathroom. Okay, we will take a break. But what we will do is thank our panelists. So people in the, ask a question, or maybe a minute, we think 45 in a minute. And so why don't four people just come and sit down where the panelists are now sitting, because we need to use the. No, because we need, uh. And so there are four people, sign them. Yeah, well, this, the first four come. And I am taking a break for a minute. So why don't we get two people at this table? We need to provide a divided, even with women and dads, so.